Good evening. Welcome to the August 25th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you, everybody. A roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes.
Livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
And can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, sir.
At this point, then we move to you for information to the board.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity. I always just wanted to give the board and our folks that might be watching from home a little bit of an enrollment update. We are opening now with 9,451 students. That's up a little bit from last year at this time, which was 9,431, so we're plus 20, up about 150 students actually from the closing of last year when we fell a little bit below 9,300 actually. The interesting piece of this, we're calling them redshirt kindergarten students, students that sat a year out because of COVID last year. At this point, last year we were at 544 kindergarten students, now we're at 708.
Oh, wow.
So it's a very significant increase in our kindergarten. That's been part of our increase in teachers, despite the fact that we're relatively stable enrollment. We are up 13 now, 13 teachers, and that is in line with the projections that we used when we talked about how we wanted to spend ester funds, and part of the spending of ester funds is to shrink class size, particularly in the lowest grades. And so you see that type of plus 13 again despite relatively stable enrollment. Now, I do want to thank our registrars, Margaret Reese and Katie Raybeck, and if anyone sees them around the office, just to kind of tip of the hat to them, we've done 672 registrations since July 1st, which is a really significant intake of students, and we're just operating with two now. We will potentially look to expand that to sort of two and a half in the future, but we really are grateful for all of their effort. That's a tremendous amount of labor and tremendous amount of work to get folks in so that we can start school on time. The most popular questions beyond enrollment are masks and weather right now, so we'll just address both. Masks are something that we continue to monitor. I think really what's most important for our families to understand is there's a very significant difference outlined by the Ohio Department of Health and the Kibbutz County Board of Health in terms of how we would handle quarantines for students who are masked versus those who wouldn't be masked. Students who come into close contact in a classroom setting with a positive COVID kit and are masked do not have to quarantine. Those who are not wearing masks have to quarantine. And we obviously want to keep students in school. We know that outside of school, they often will come in contact with a family member, and then it's really beyond us. We don't have any control over what happens in homes, but in school, to me, that's a pretty big impetus to wear a mask. I'm wearing a mask, as I've talked about, and I think it's important that really our adults do so when they're in contact with students who have not had a chance to be vaccinated. Again, it is not a mandate, but it's a strong recommendation, and I would again say that we really, it's a huge difference. We want to keep kids in school and wearing masks is the way to do that. In terms of the weather, we got burnt today, and not burnt in the way that would happen from a high temperature. We follow forecasts. Yesterday, when we made the call to have no school today, the projection was 104 degrees on the real field. We have been taking temperatures in our classrooms, in our buildings. On Monday, and Monday was really just a high of 84, on Monday we were reaching 89 degrees in our second floor classrooms. We called it for Tuesday, knowing that it was going to be that much hotter, and did so for yesterday, anticipating it was going to be hotter than Tuesday. So we will have school tomorrow. Today's cooler temperatures allowed us to get some cooler air into buildings, and we will be back tomorrow. So those are three updates. If any of you have any questions or comments along any of those lines.
I've explained it. What are you going to do? It's Northeast Ohio when it comes to the weather.
Yeah, normally, you know, those forecasts have gotten more and more accurate as we've gone through. I would also address that folks have said, well, go back to starting after Labor Day, and that is not a magic formula either. The ironic piece is that I've been part of heat days two times now in my career, well, this is a third, but the first two occurred after Labor Day. I remember two years ago, the hottest day, the day we came closest to having a heat day, was actually October 1st, when it got to about 89 degrees. So no magic formula for a school calendar, and again, we'll do the best we can with the information we have on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. Any other information to the board this evening?
Oh, that's all.
Communications, any board members' communications? Treasurer?
I do not have any.
PTA council report?
I have a very nicely written report from Mrs. Wolf, who was unable to make it tonight. I will try to do my diligence to make sure I honor her words. Parma Council PTA has had its first meeting of the school year on Wednesday, October 18th. Everyone was very excited to be together in person. Warm welcome and thank you to all the staff in our district this year who have worked very hard to get everything up and running. All the PTA units are working hard to promote increased membership. Welcome packets and membership envelopes were sent out with families in the school welcome packets. Most of our PTAs set tables at the open house events to promote PTA. We are asking parents, teachers, and community members to join PTA and become part of the oldest and largest child advocacy organization in the country. There are 4 million of us, and the voice of 4 million people is difficult to silence. Please consider joining our PTAs. Memberships are sold for between $5 and $7 depending on the unit. Anyone can join the PTAs. You can either send the money into the school, or you can join online via Member Hub. All of the unit's links to join are on the PCSD website under the PCPTA page. We're selling PCPTA calendars again this year. The calendars contain student artwork. They also have important dates for all of our PTA units. Please consider buying a calendar for $5. Council is also selling PCPTA spirit wear. These one-of-a-kind t-shirts, hooded sweatshirts, and tote bags have our current council theme shine bright together with a sunflower that has the names of all of our PTA units. You can order online at PCPTAgear.cheddarup.com. Orders will be taken until August 31st. Council would like to congratulate Green Valley, Parma Senior High, Hillside, and Pleasant Valley for earning the 2019 through '21 National PTA School of Excellence Awards, as well as Densler, who was just awarded the 2020 through '22 Distinction. Over the years, we have had many units earn this PTA award, and we look forward to assisting our units with the hope of full participation in this program. PCPTA is looking forward to hosting a family engagement event on Thursday, September 16th that will include a performance from the West African culture drummers and promote the National PTA Reflections Program. This event will be free to our Parma City School District families and held in the auditorium of Parma High. Details will be coming soon to our school community. Finally, our next PTA council meeting is Wednesday, September 8th at 7:00 p.m. in the cafeteria at Parma High. Council is looking forward to shine bright together this year. Thank you, and have a great evening, everyone. Melissa Wolf, President, Parma Council of PTAs.
Thank you.
Best possible Melissa Wolf impression.
You did well.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, you could have left that part out.
I don't have a sunflower out.
Do we have any amendments this evening?
We do not.
No amendments. Okay. Any requests for public participation for stuff on the agenda on tonight? Okay. This is going here. I then move to adopt resolution 2021-08385, approval of the written record of proceedings for the August 12th, 2021 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to the second for 2021-08385. Questions or comments? Seen none. Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
2021-08385 has been approved. Not used to just have, I was waiting for the whatever. All right, that moves us to curriculum with Mr. Kreis.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2021-08-386, approval to enter into an affiliation agreement between the Career and Technical Education Networking and Advanced Computers Experimental Learning Program of the City of Parma School District and Cuyahoga Community College.
Second.
We have a motion to the second for 2021-08386. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08386 has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 08-387, approval of the foreign exchange student from Spain to attach Parma Senior High.
Probably.
Throw up to attend.
Oh.
Tell them to attach.
What are we attaching them to? Do we have a second?
Second.
We do. We have a motion to the second for resolution 2021-08387. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08387 has been approved.
Unless another member has anything to discuss, this concludes curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Now, right back at you with business.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08-388, approving change order for the Parma Senior High School structural repairs.
Second.
I have a motion to the second for 2021-08388. Are there questions or comments?
I could comment on this. Mrs. Brodsky asked for some clarification, and I think anytime she asks, I think it's always good for the public to hear this as well. So we, when we started, and we clearly doesn't include me, so I'm not out there with a shovel. When our folks started to do the work for securing the ramp and the foundation over by the auditorium of Parma Senior High, which was gathering a lot of water, they actually found what we are referring to as the pipe to nowhere. There was a pipe that was not on any plans. No one could find any record of this pipe existing. We think potentially it was a pipe that was laid with the potential to eventually expand Parma Senior High. Mr. Schweitzer filled us in that that was sort of the one sort of mindset when they built Parma Senior High, is well, we might want to build it bigger at this point. When we found the pipe, we, that's obviously a significant change in the planning that had gone into addressing the problem. The good piece is that the pipe was actually causing all of the flood and the water to really collect there, so we'd have to remove the pipe to nowhere to make sure that we can finish the job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08388 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-08-389, authorizing renewal of service agreement for LTE hotspots, hardware, and service.
Second.
Motion to the second for 2021-08389. Questions, comments?
Sure, Mrs. Brodsky asked about this one too, and it's, no, I actually appreciate it. It forces me to be a little bit sharper about these resolutions as well. So we deployed 400 hotspots last year to families who were in need. This year, it's a smaller number. We're looking at 200, and that is based upon the number of students enrolling in Parma Virtual Learning Academy who would qualify for free and reduced lunch. We don't know that all of them will ask, but we'll be prepared to provide them with hotspots if they need them.
Thank you. It's a good thing. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08389 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-08-390, authorizing sale of two obsolete and unneeded buses to the Lorraine City School District.
Second.
A motion to the second for 2021-08390. Questions, comments?
Fun story as well.
Who asked about that?
Mrs. Brodsky actually happened to ask about, how are these marketed? In this case, it was actually word of mouth. Lorraine called us to see if we had any extra buses. To me, that's a very low price, but Dr. Schneider informs me that in an auction, we would only get about $3,400 for these buses. So why that's interesting is you too can go to an auction and apparently buy a new school bus for approximately $3,400. But in this case, we're actually making, Mr. Bender, would accept that? Yes?
Yeah.
Put a pound's element on the side.
Cheaper, probably.
Even cheaper, maybe. So we're actually going to make a little bit more on the sale of these obsolete buses than we would have had we gone to auction.
All right. Good explanation. Any others, any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08390 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening.
Okay. Now, right back at you, Mr. Kreis with finance. Busy night for you.
I'm telling you, I miss Vaughn now.
Can you do the second?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-08-391, authorizing the disposal of obsolete office equipment from the finance department.
Second.
A motion to the second for 2021-08391. You give us an example?
Well, this is the check folding machine we have, and what it is, is when the checks print out through our system, there are two pieces of paper, and they have a machine folds it. Last machine we had, this little obsolete one was jamming at the time and wasn't folding it, so we couldn't mail them out, so we had to get a new one.
All right. Everything has a shelf life.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08391 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08-392, a resolution approving enrollment in the Express Scripts Transparency in Coverage Program.
Second.
And motion to the second for 2021-08392. Questions or comments?
Mrs. Brodsky asked about this one too. So I'll tell you what it is. It's a new regulation from the federal government that says anybody should be able to pull up anybody's health insurance plan on any computer and read how, read everything about the plan, and it's supposed to be done monthly. So obviously, we don't have the capability of doing this, but Express Scripts is doing it for a lot of companies, companies and school districts that they represent, so they'll do it for initial setup at $2,500 and then $150 a month, which, I mean, the federal government tells us we have to do this, so we have to do this. When we have the contract, we signed a contract with Express Scripts, they do $13,000 to use on other programs, and we haven't used any of the money yet. So we're going to use the $2,500 and whatever is $150 bucks until we get to the $13,000, so we have no initial outlay right now.
Oh, wow.
We're delaying it probably, our payment will probably be here.
Well, that's a pretty good deal. I like where there's nothing now.
Right, me too.
That works. Any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08392 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08-393, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
A motion to the second for 2021-08393. Questions or comments?
I wanted to comment about the first one, which is minus $16 million. I talked about at the last board meeting how the state had changed the funding formula. Instead of going through us as a pass-through, they're funding directly. Well, since we're no longer a pass-through, we don't need those appropriations, so they're lowering appropriations.
Yeah, they're funding who directly?
They're funding charter schools and vouchers. So charter schools last year was like $12.8 million, and vouchers were like $4.4 million or something like that.
Comes out exactly the same, except it's not running through us, and the problem that we potentially see in that, that we brought up last time, is that it doesn't give us any oversight either.
No.
There's no check or balance from us.
Doesn't come through us at all.
So we're just going with.
So these will be unaudited numbers that are given to, are taken from us, unaudited numbers that are taken from us, basically.
Right. It's going directly to the charter schools and directly to the parochial schools.
Interesting. Any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08393 has been approved.
I'd like to adopt resolution 2021-08-394, approval of then-and-now certificates over $3,000.
Second.
I have a motion to the second for 2021-08394. Steve always questions these, so he asked me if I would do it for him.
Yeah, a lot of these have, well, a couple of these have to do with the business office that, you know, former employee who's handling it, and she, no longer with us, but we got the bills without purchase orders, so the business office now is correcting it, but that created a dent in the mouth for the two Northeast Ohio Sewer District ones. MEG was, MEG is something that parochial schools use, it's a vendor, and that must just been, at the end of the year, we were closing our purchase orders, and instead of sending a purchase order just for the month of June, they didn't set one up, whoever did set one up, so that fell through the cracks. A lot of them have to do at the end of the year.
But the big ones are the utility, the water?
Yeah, the Northeast Sewer District, those are, that's what a lot of them want. Power School is something that every year we get, usually we tell them to bill us after beginning of fiscal year, which is July 1st, and see they bill us on June 29th and June 30th, I thought, well, wait a couple of days, but it has to do with.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08394 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08-395, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
A motion to the second for 2021-08395. And again, this is one where Steve always likes to thank the people, and we all do, we all fall behind that, so tonight I will thank you. Whenever the Parma schools are the recipient, because somebody wants to donate to us and they're thinking of us in that way, that's always a great thing. So in this case, there's two up there. Thank you very much, and let's move forward. Anybody else? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08395 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. Legislation, I know Mrs. Brodsky's up here, I think they're still in recess, but Columbus, but if you have anything.
I do not.
Don't be coming back.
We'll be watching.
That moves us, again, Mrs. Brodsky, Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08396, approval of the following certificated exhibits: confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacement, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, confirmation of substitute administrator appointment, approval of certified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second. Motion to the second for 2021-08396. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08396 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08397, approval of the Parma City Schools Bus Duty Substitute Appointment.
Second. Motion to the second for 2021-08397. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08397 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08398, approval of the following classified exhibits: confirmation of classified appointments replacement, confirmation of change of classified assignments, approval of classified stipend, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second. I have a motion to the second for 2021-08398. Any questions or comments? Seen none. Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08398 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08399, confirmation of classified supervisor appointment.
Second. Motion to the second for 2021-08399. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, this is a, I think, an exciting development for our district. If you know Alan Mathiely, you know how much he loves our district and has really poured so much of his heart and really his life into doing everything he could to make our buildings and grounds be as positive as possible. He has endured as his department, you know, cut after cut after cut, and Alan really is, at times, sort of held that department together with sort of some duct tape and a little bit of glue, almost literally. So we're excited to be able to essentially promote Alan. He retired at the last board meeting, he will come back as the supervisor of buildings and grounds. He will then actually hire an additional working foreman to sort of have the role that he used to, so it's in addition to our maintenance department, which we really have been very, very thin in this regard, so we're excited for Alan's leadership and excited to build back better. Congratulations to Alan, if you are able to appoint him this evening.
Yes, and as you stated, if you, if you know Alan, he's got a lot of great qualities. He does love the district, he's been here for a long time. It's been a long, long time since I was a teacher at Parma High School, and that's when he started as an assistant custodian here, that's when I first met him. He's always had a good work ethic, and another thing I like about him, he tells it the way he sees it. He's quick, you know, no bones about it, so congratulations to Alan. He would, he wanted to be at the meeting where this happened, but he had made plans, because originally he was planning on coming on a Thursday night, and when we changed it to Wednesday night, he was unable to attend, so he wanted me to express that, how excited he is to start in his new role.
I'd like to get a comment, if that's all right. I have known Alan for, golly, nearly, probably close to 30 years, since my days as an elementary parent at Dan Cameron Show Elementary School, and as a first, and when I was a first-time PTA president, Alan bent over backwards to help us always in every experience, and through all my years on council and everything, I had the same experience with him. He was wonderful to work with, always very accommodating, went on his way, thought of things that we wouldn't maybe have thought about to make sure our events were successful, and he does tell it like it is, and I appreciate that.
Me too.
So it's, I was mad at him for retiring, and told him so, and he said, well, wait a minute, maybe I'm not, we'll see, so it's like, it's been worked out, so I'm thrilled that he's back as well, and look forward to seeing him in his new role.
He would have been embarrassed if he was here.
He doesn't really handle praise very well.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08-399 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08-400, approval of reduction in force classified personnel.
Second.
I have a motion to the second for 2021-08-400. Any questions or comments?
I'll comment on this one. In the new budget, parochial schools have the option of, yeah, parochial schools have the option of taking their auxiliary funds to us or do it through themselves. I mean, if they do it themselves, they have to do all the rules and follow the guideline. Bethany Luther decided they wanted to take it through us. So, the person who was working there was only working one day a week, so we're only reducing one day a week, not a week, letting this person go. So, she's going from four days to three days.
Okay.
All the other parochial schools decided to stick with us.
You get the logic. That's a very good, their logic.
Yeah, I don't understand why they'd want to do it themselves, but.
Oh, well. Any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08-400 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08-401, rescind approval to amend resolution 2021-08-379, creation of Special Education Assistant with Registered Behavior Technician, RBT certification position, and adoption of job description.
Second.
Motion to the second for 2021-08-401. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I can just clarify, I mean, this is the smallest of small changes. We added some compensation to the RBT certified position, and we didn't add it to last year's pay scale when we did the 2% raise that everybody got in calculation, so when we had the pay scale, I mean, we're talking about pennies really, but we should have added $3 to last year's pay scale, then given 2% on that compensation, so if it was $12 and went to 15, we should have given the 2% on the 15. We gave the 2% on the 12 and then added $3 to it, so it, literally pennies, but that's the change.
It reads like a big deal.
That's today.
But apparently it's not. Okay, any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08-401 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08-402, creation of Special Education Assistant with Registered Behavior Technician, RBT certification position, and adoption of job description.
Second.
Yeah, motion to the second for 2021-08-402. Questions or comments? Just the other half of what you just explained.
Right.
Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08-402 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08-403, granting authority to the administration to hire Diane Burns for month-end cash balance reconciliation for the period of August 1, 2020, through August 31, 2021, and training of district employee.
Second.
I have a motion to the second for 2021-08-403. My understanding is that she has some unique knowledge of what needs to be done for these month-end cash balance reconciliations, and she will be training her own employee to do so.
Correct. We had worked with CPA firm, and it just didn't seem to work out. It wasn't, because our reconciliation is so complex, and the person who was trying to handle it had no knowledge of Parma. They were just trying to do it based on their experience of doing reconciliation, and it didn't seem to work out, so we moved to option B, which is like have Diane come in and do the reconciliation twice.
Well, goodness, she's able to come back.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08-403 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-08-404, acceptance of classified administrative resignation.
Second.
And motion to the second for 2021-08-404. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I can comment on this one. Yeah, this one's a disappointment, certainly. Audrey Holtzman has been with us for two years now, and I think she's really done a great job in a lot of different ways, and her husband has been offered just a phenomenal professional opportunity in the Tampa, Florida area, and they obviously have two young children and aren't going to cross-country parent, and so she will actually be working as a director of communications for the nursing school at the University of Southern Florida. It is a loss, but we also have a lot of talents in-house, and we look forward to working with, you know, our current personnel to talk about how we want to fulfill the absence of Audrey, as well as actually looking, you know, externally too, to see what type of person we can maybe bring in to continue to add to the momentum that we have. Audrey's been great, we will miss her, but organizations move on because organizations have to move on, and we certainly will do everything we can to not miss her.
Thank you. Yeah, she will, she will be missed. Every organization has a set of what I call go-to people, and I like to fit into that category. She's one of our go-to people, and whenever you lose one of those, they're missed. Any questions, comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08-404 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss regarding Human Resources, that will conclude for this evening.
Okay, now, if I'm reading this correctly, there's nothing under policies?
Neither that, I mean.
Okay. Is there any other information requested by board members this evening? I see none. This is the opportunity to have questions or concerns right into the record. We had one, but agreed to, you know, go with, Dr. Smiler's going to work on that, the answer, and.
If not, I'll be back in two weeks, and we'll.
You're always welcome.
I'll be honest with you, just the information we've gotten so far, and so the question for folks who haven't heard is, your daughter found out that, you know, there's mandatory vaccine to get certification. The issue that we may be facing is that clinicals for your daughter's program are held in nursing homes, and the nursing home may be requiring anyone entering to be vaccinated. So, that, and I don't have all the details yet, but that's apparently what we're learning at this point.
That's an interesting take.
But it shouldn't be required to take a test?
Wouldn't be a test, but clinicals are sort of on-the-job-type practicum experiences that, you know, to get the actual certification, you have to complete that on a job site, so to speak, and if the job site's saying, you know, this is the requirement. But again, I don't have all the details. We'll look further, we'll look into whether there are exceptions and talk about those, but I think that that's sort of the, what we're learning is a parameter right now.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-08-406 to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to the second to adopt resolution 2021-08-406. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-08-406 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.